Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your night to join us for this public hearing. The public hearing tonight is for an Eagle permit application for Tom Duncan, Sandy Creek Residential Development in Green Oak Township in Livingston County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be the moderator for tonight's hearing. But before we get too far, it's always a good idea to go through the agenda and what the plan is for the hearing. We're going to have introduction, which we're doing right now. And the big thing to keep in mind, there's actually two parts of tonight's hearing. There's going to start off with an informational session. And so the applicant or an applicant for the representative for the applicant has an opportunity to talk about the proposed project. And then we're going to follow that up with a question and answer session. And then later than around 6:30, we're going to move on to the actual official hearing part. So that'll be where you have an opportunity to make a statement for the record on this application and project. We're also going to go over a few other things like other ways to submit an official comment, where to find other info and who to contact if in case you have further questions. All right. All lines will be muted during the hearing. If you have a question, you could submit them using the Q and A box. But we're going to be answering those questions during the question and answer session after the informational session part. And then I'll suggest you're aware, we are recording this hearing. So you'll be able to access it on our YouTube channel after the hearing is over. You also have an opportunity to raise your hand and ask a question during the informational session, but we'll talk about how we're going to do that later on. All right. At this time, I would like to invite our other Eagle staff who are on the line to turn their cameras on and introduce themselves.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matt Rogers. I'm the environmental quality analyst from the Lansing District Office that is reviewing this application.
And I'm Jeff Pierce. I'm the district supervisor for the Lansing and Jackson Water Resources Unit within the district office.
I'm Hui Radix. I am the district floodplain engineer for the Grand Rapids District Office. I am the one that is reviewing the application for floodplain impacts for this project.
All right, perfect. Thank you all for being here and for those introductions. We're going to move right into the informational session and we're going to try to find Scott Tussigant for the informational session, who's a representative for the applicant. But while we're doing that, anything you want to say or have to lead into the the hearing, Matt?
Sure, I can give a quick summary of why we're here in the project. The applicant has submitted a permit application opposing installation of fill and wetland equalization culverts for driveway through floodplain and approximately 0.21 acres of wetland in order to access upland on the property for development.
All right. Thank you much, Matt. And Scott, it looks like we have you unmuted. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you. It's kind of faint, but we can hear you.
All right, I'll try to move a little closer and speak a little louder.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so I'll just speak for a couple of minutes, expand on what Matt had just indicated.
And Scott, just so you know, I do have some a couple of diagrams here in the background that I can put on.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. So the proposed project is currently an unaddressed parcel. It's located in Green Oak Township and is parcel ID 4716-27-300-02, as indicated in the submittal. The subject site is approximately 12 acres and of that 12 acres, about 60% of it is upland. The south side of that site is Davis Creek. And the north and east sides is an existing subdivision, Fairlane subdivision. And to the west is Marshall Road where it fronts. So in addition to Davis Creek being on the south border of the parcel, there of course is a regulated wetland that exists along the western frontage of the site, along Marshall Road. The subject site does not contain, or does contain, sorry, does contain property within the 100-year floodplain, as was indicated in the application. Currently, the site sits as an undeveloped parcel. So the permit application is ultimately to allow the construction of a driveway across the regulated wetland to access the upland area of the parcel. The access point would be from Marshall Road, which is on the west side of the subject parcel. No upland area exists along the frontage of this site on Marshall Road. So thus, you know, we need to have that wetland crossing ultimately to access and utilize the parcel for a single-family home in which the natural features and the beauty of the area can also be enjoyed by the owner as the same for surrounding homes. The location of the driveway is important. Ultimately, you know, we had to go through Livingston County Road Commission for an approved location for site distance. So the location as proposed in the application conforms to the road commission requirements and location. We also wanted to ensure as minimal impact as possible to the wetland. So we sought a shortest route to cross the wetlands and a route that had as few trees as possible because there are of course trees within the wetland area. In keeping in mind the hydraulics of the wetland, we do have three 18-inch equalizing pipes proposed underneath the driveway to maintain the hydraulic connection for the continuation of the wetland that's to the north of the proposed driveway. The wetland at the frontage of the site is also within the 100-year floodplain. So constructing a driveway would result in a wetland fill of about 0.21 acres as well as a floodplain fill. And thus, as is required by Eagle, a compensating floodplain cut would be required based on the amount of fill we do have. The compensating cut is being provided on the north and the south side of the driveway as it approaches the upland area of the parcel. And to meet the required compensating cut, approximately 20, 22 trees, upland trees would need to be removed to, again, to meet that compensating cut requirement. So in addition, in addition to the compensating cut that's needed, a floodplain analysis and modeling had to be performed as well as part of this permit application, which is also was included for review and approval by people. So ultimately, given the floodplain fill is occurring beyond the primary flood channel, the Davis Creek, the impact of the proposed floodplain fill on the floodplain elevation was not measurable. And you know, getting into a little bit more specifics on the access portion of the project. The landowner had previously attempted to secure ingress egress to the upland area via the adjacent private road network to no avail ultimately. And the efforts went through court rulings in which it was ruled that ingress and egress is not to be allowed. And that ultimately, all parties or owners within said subdivision need to unanimously approve any potential connection in the future. We did, as a matter of process and involving the township, approached the township in May of 2021 for a pre-op meeting. That pre-op meeting was held on May 25th of 21 with Green Oak Township officials to discuss the proposed project, which at the time did include a private road with four single-family homes. So a little bit larger scale than what's currently being proposed now. At the pre-op meeting, I'll note that, you know, of course, the project was discussed, but it was also indicated from the township's perspective that the owner needs to seek out the Eagle permit prior to making official application for a project on the property, which nowadays is not uncommon for development projects. So we've been doing such, obviously, working through, working through the submittal process, permitting process through Eagle. And again, you know, pending result of Eagle's final determination, if a permit ultimately is to be issued, then we would move on to the next steps, which would be, you know, a review and approval process through the township, among other entities like the road commission and drain commission. So with that being said, I think I'll pass it back off to the Eagle team from here.
All right. Thanks for sharing that information, Scott. All right. So we're going to move right into kind of the question and answer session. So the representative for the applicant has provided a little info on the project. This is your opportunity to ask a question and you can either do that by submitting it in the Q and A box. You'll see at the bottom of your Zoom toolbar. Just click that, type your question in and hit enter. Or if you want to ask your question verbally, you can just click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. That will raise your hand on Zoom and will call on you and unmute you when it's your turn. Or if you're on the phone, if you have some phoning callers, you can raise your hand in Zoom by typing pound two. So you select pound two, that'll raise your hand and and we'll unmute you and you have your chance to ask your question. A couple of things to keep in mind. So this is your opportunity to ask a question. If you have a statement that you would like to make about this project, please hold on to that until we get to the hearing part. That'll be the next part. So please this reserve this time for questions and it looks like okay, comments on the application. Okay, so yeah, I think I just addressed this. There's a question asking if this question is it time for general comments on the application? So general comments will be coming up here in a little bit. So that, so if, if we don't have any questions or once we get through the questions, the next part of the process is we'll tell you how you can make comments outside of tonight's hearing. And then we'll move into the hearing part where you can make a statement for the record and we're going to give you instructions on how to do that. Right. Are there any questions for tonight then? On this application? All right, I have one here. I reviewed, the person reviewed the Eagle documents online, but like to hear the environmental effects on the regulated wetlands if this permit is granted. So Matt, I'm not sure if that's something you'd be able to answer or?
Sure, that's, that's something I can answer. So during our review process, we typically look at the the fill going into the wetland itself along with the effect that it will have on hydrology. So essentially, this project will be the loss of 0.21 acres of the wetland and those equalization culverts are a requirement of the driveway in order to have a minimal effect on the hydrology. So the main impact will be the fill within the wetland.
Yeah, I'd probably add, it's, it's a little too early for us to to say much on that. That's part of our review process is determining what those impacts would be as we, you know, determine whether a permit could be issued for the project or not. Once we make a decision, we will have a, a report that kind of outlines what our view of the impacts would be to the wetlands in the surrounding area, but it's probably a little too early for us to give a detailed response to that since we're still in the process of reviewing it.
Very helpful. I thank you both for that answer. Next question, was it determined whether this property was a southern hardwood swamp?
An exact classification of the wetland hasn't been made, but from site visits, we believe it's floodplain forest wetland is the designation.
Thank you. And then a next, another question, this is awfully close to Davis Creek. How will this affect the creek?
So there won't be any direct impacts to the creek. The only effect or the only impact upon the creek will be within the floodplain, which is being reviewed under, under the permit application by Minhuiraddicks. But there are no, there won't be any direct fill or any direct impacts within the creek itself.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Are there any other questions tonight? That you have for our panel here? Okay, here we go. The question is, I think related to the notification process for this hearing, I believe, why, or for the project, why weren't a much broader range of riparian neighbors notified?
So for public notice, the procedure is to notify all adjacent landowners. So in this case, that was everybody bordering the parcel along with the the parcels across the river from the property itself. As for other people being notified, that's just our typical procedure.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions tonight before we move on to the next part of the hearing on our agenda? All right. What is, what is the benefit of the project? It's very broad. I'm not sure. You want to take a stab at it, Matt?
Sure, I we, we review the permit application under the definition of public interest. So we have to weigh private the, the benefit of the activity versus the environmental impact. So in this case, the benefit of the activity would be accessing the upland on the property and the impact would be the fill and the floodplain impacts themselves. So yeah, that is a broad question, but to access the upland on the property would be the purpose of the project.
All right. Thank you. Has the impact of filling in the wetland on groundwater been assessed?
I don't believe so. That's not something we typically review in our process. That, that might be something reviewed underwater quality, but we, we do not review that in the resources permitting process.
Thank you. Were issues satisfied that were brought up at the pre-application meeting?
I wasn't in attendance for that. Jeff, maybe you can speak on that?
Yeah, as the person who was in the pre-application meeting, I guess I can answer a little bit on this. At this point, I think we're still working through concerns about potential compensatory mitigation requirements. I don't believe that has been resolved at this time. I'd have to, I'm sorry to say, I'd have to go back through exactly what we put through our pre-application meeting and compare it to, but I think for the most part, that's the biggest thing, issue that has been still in the process of working through. I think they have tried to address some other concerns that were brought up at that time.
Thanks, Jeff. Were you aware that the owner was denied development and access to the piece during development called Sandy Creek that they successfully and profitably developed and that they accepted this condition at that time? And then they're wondering if the Scott is aware, the engineer is aware of that as well, the engineering firm. So I'm not, I'm not sure if you're familiar with any background on this property.
The only background I have on that piece of information is that when we asked about feasible and prudent alternatives, such as accessing the property through upland, on the east side of the property through the existing neighborhood, they mentioned that they did attempt to gain access, but were denied. But that's essentially all that we have been informed of on the issue.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Has the impact on the river of clearing the southern cut been considered? Or maybe will be considered as part of the review on however you want to answer that.
I'm assuming that's referencing the tree clearing or the the compensating cut for the floodplain. But that has, has been reviewed and it shouldn't have any impacts on the river itself. It will all be within the floodplain and the wetland.
All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? Before we move on? This is a comment, taking the two feet will leave the soil exposed. Exposed, exposed. So I'm not sure if anyone can, can speak to that or or any follow-up?
I'll, I'll speak to that real quick. Yeah, I mean, if it, if this is approved as proposed and it includes like that compensating cut where there'd be removal of trees, they would still be required to stabilize those areas appropriately following both county Part 91 standards as well as any conditions and standards that we would place on the permit, likely being things like, you know, erosional matting, seeding and planting of the, the cut areas so that they aren't just left as exposed soils that could then erode.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Will all public comments be considered?
Yes, after the hearing, the comment period will be open for 10 days and we'll review all comments during this hearing as well as any written comments we receive.
Thank you, Matt. Another question asking how, how can we say that there won't be an impact with? Emphasizing protection. Say there won't be any impact. Is clear emphasis present? Yeah, I guess I'm confused by this, by the question.
I think what we're saying is there's no, there's no direct impact. So they're not doing any direct work within that. I mean, the secondary and cumulative impacts from the project are being looked at, how that may affect the stream itself. I mean, there's going to be changes to the floodplain and floodway associated with this. So just, you know, it's inappropriate to say that there will be no impact on that, but I think what we were trying to say is there's no direct impacts at this time or that, that are proposed.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. And again, if you have any statements or comments, we're going to save that for a little bit later on, but if you have any questions, please phrase those as questions. Be helpful. If you have any more. So are there any more questions that we have for the panel before moving on that to the opportunity that you'll have to make comments tonight? All right. Let's see, going once, going twice. All right. Well, well, we're going to move on here, but before we do, if there are no more questions typed in, I don't see any hands raised. We're going to talk about the other ways to make a comment in case you don't want to make a comment tonight. So I'm still not seeing any. So we're going to go ahead and move on. All right. Thank you all for those great questions and for our panel for taking a stab at answering them and to Scott for providing the information on the project. So in case you didn't want to make a comment tonight in the hearing portion, which we're going to be doing next, you can also make a comment through Eagles MindViro System. You can make them under submission HPF QT HB J RRR, I'm sorry, JA RRR. And you'll see the link in front of you, or you can do it by mail to Matthew Rogers at Eagle Water Resources Division, Lansing District Office, 525 West Alleghan Street, Lansing, Michigan, 48933. And the comment period after the public hearing will be open for 10 days. So it'll be November 16th is when the public comment period closes. All right. So we have arrived at that point for making comments. Matt, would you want to read the opening statement for us tonight?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Rogers and I'm the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be serving as the hearings officer for the public hearing on Eagle submission number HPF-QTHB-JARRR. With me tonight is Jeff Pierce, Lansing and Jackson District Supervisor and Minhuiraddicks, Grand Rapids District Floodplain Engineer. Describe how this is going to work tonight. I'll begin with some background information about why we're here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments and we'll spend the majority of time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, 1994 Public Act 451 as amended. We are here tonight because Tom Duncan has proposed the following. Placement of approximately 202 cubic yards of fill material and 0.21 acres of floodplain forest wetland to construct a 35-foot wide, 265-foot long driveway through wetland and floodplain with three 18-inch equalization culverts. No wetland mitigation is currently proposed. The project is located in Township 01 North, Range 06 East, Section 27 in Green Oak Township, Livingston County, Michigan. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part 303 Wetlands Protections and Part 31 Water Resources Protections of Act 451. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the wetlands and floodplain. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 301 Wetlands Protection of Act 451, Eagles charged to make the following indications as required by Section 30311 of Part 303. A permit for an activity listed in Section 30304 shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. A permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. Additionally, a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. Proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in wetland or a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the Tom Duncan Sandy Creek Residential Development application an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments, but before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Livingston Daily Press in Argus on October 27, 2023. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant and their consultant have already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who indicated in the registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on those who raised their hand in their Zoom toolbar, they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called, been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via MindViro Portal, email or US Mail. When all the comments have been completed, we'll ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We'll indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for 10 days from the date of this hearing ending on November 16th, 2023. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing ending on November sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed. Or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle Mind Viro Portal website. And searching for the application number H P F dash Q T H B dash J A R R R. Thank you for your attention. We'll begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Um, just to recap a couple of things. Uh, I have a list of names who indicated during registration that they wanted to make a comment. Uh, we have six people on that list, um, so we'll start with those. And then we will open it up to anyone else who would like to make a comment. You just need to raise your hand in Zoom like we had talked about, clicking the raise hand icon. Um, if you're not one of those people who indicated during registration. If you're on the phone, you can select pound two to raise your hand, and when the time comes, I'll remind you of of how to do that, and then we'll unmute you. Everyone will get four minutes. I'll give you one minute heads up. Uh, when you're getting close to your time. Uh, again. List your name and any affiliation that you have when it's your turn and you're called upon. Uh, it'll be one comment per person to make it fair for everybody, so. Uh, please stick to one comment. One one turn rather, but if you have somebody on the line, somebody else there who would like to take a turn, um, just let me know. When you're making your comment so that I know to to pass it on to that person so that they can make their comment as well. Um, and everyone here will have an opportunity and a chance to make a comment, so we'll be here until we get through all the comments. Uh, with that. Uh, the first person up is James Facker. And then after James is Carl Zen. So James, we're gonna unmute you on our end. Looks like you're unmuted. You can begin your statement when you're ready. Are you there, James? It looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Oh, yeah, we can hear you now.
I'm resident of Green Oak Township. Uh, a president, uh, an owner of property on the Huron River. Involved in here in the watershed council. Uh, involved with the township with natural rivers. Uh, development and. Uh, responsibilities and my comment is.
Hey, James, you're you're cutting out. Yep, we're we're here. Hey, James, we can still, we can still hardly hear you. Well, what we might want to do is um have you call in by phone to make your comment. Or or you can make your comment via one of those other ways we had talked about. And I can bring that screen up again, but I think you have a bad connection or there's something wrong with your microphone. You there, James? We can't, we can't hear you, James. We're get, we'll provide you with that phone number. So that you can call him by phone and maybe that'll be a better connection. Does that work? James, are you hearing us? Alright. We're gonna, we're gonna have to move on to the next person because we're not, we're not hearing you, James. Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can get your comment. Either by phone or in follow up. Yep, sorry, thank you. Alright, next up is Carl Zen. And then after Carl is Mark Saint Charles. Carl, you are unmuted on our end. Uh, yep, you can begin when you're ready.
Okay, is my voice coming through well enough?
Yep, yours is coming through good.
Okay, Carl's in one one four five one Fairlane Drive. My wife and I own a lot in Fairland subdivision just north of the. Parcel of the proposal that we're reviewing this evening, more than half of the wetland being considered. In this proposal is on the Zen property just to the north. So what's done on the south side has direct impact. On the northern part of the wetland. All of which is protected by the Natural Rivers Act. Five items seems to me are lists missing from the proposal. A wetland mitigation plan. A plan for scraping the cuts needed to balance the floodway. A tree clearing plan, just providing a list of trees isn't sufficient. A mitigation plan for the trees that are lost. Including some desirable swamp white oak, red oak, and shag bark hickory. Um, also, there was no recognition in the proposal that it is subject to review under. Green Oak Township procedures and also the Natural Rivers Act. Um, second, it seems to me a full review can't be concluded by Water Resources Division. Until all owners of adjacent property are informed. The list of adjacent owners doesn't include names. For lots five, six, seven in the Sandy Bottom subdivision and parcel fifty nine across. Marshall Road from the proposed development. My third point, the proposal represents that the driveway through the wetland affects less than one third of an acre. But there's a lot of other damage that needs to be considered. The cuts that are made in the slope adjacent to the wetland. The limitations on natural wetland flow and movement of organisms and seeds north and south. It's a considerable loss to cut down fifty trees. Um, from this rather unique swamp woodland. A fourth point, the proposal expects to waive mitigation requirement. Because the permitted uh wetland impact is less than a third of an acre. Um, and no reasonable opportunity for mitigation exists, but several mitigation sites are available in the. Uh, Huron River watershed. Um, five, the proposal would not meet the requirements of the Natural Rivers Act.
You have one minute left, Mr. Zen.
Six of feasible and prudent alternative is available. The parcel can be sold for more than the assessed development. Value to an organization that plans to protect it as a conservation preserve. Selling the parcel to become a nature preserve does seem to be the least impactful. Feasible and prudent proposal alternative. Um, the total development costs, including the likely. Cost of wetland and tree mitigation compared to the value of the resulting residential lot suggests. A project which is neither freezable nor prudent. Seems to me the highest and best use of this parcel is to be sold as an undisturbed piece of natural riverside.
Zen, you're at, you're at four minutes? You're you're at four minutes, so if you could wrap up your comments, that'd be great.
He just did.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make a a statement on the line with you?
Oh.
Just checking.
We'll raise a hand later.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next up is a Mark Saint Charles. And then after Mark is uh Lauren McCona- McConaty. Mark, you are unmuted on our end. Uh, you just need to unmute yourself. By using the uh mute button at the bottom of your screen. And then you can make your comment.
Okay, um, Mark Saint Charles Supervisor of Green Oak Charter Township. And first, I'd like to say I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight and especially I'd like to thank Eagle staff for putting this on. So this is a very important part of this whole process. Uh, Green Oak Township offered its written comments in September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, and that was a. Combination of uh myself, a zoning administrator who helped in these comments and also our engineer. In those comments, though, I do want to clarify uh comments one and two with respect to. Access to the roads within Fairlane Fairland was incorrect. Uh, we do know now that. Uh, those roads are private. Uh, there's also a court order that they do not have. Access to those roads, I just want to clarify our comments. The rest of the comments from Green Oak Township stand, and I do want to clarify a couple of them. Uh, number, comment number four with respect to soil borings, um. I've spent a lot of time in my life digging dirt, dirty, digging sands, digging gravel. And quite frankly, I'm a little bit concerned that. Uh, we're looking at putting a driveway cut through a wetland through a floodplain without soil borings because. Quite frankly, I don't know if the ground underneath that uh private driveway or driveway will support. The amount of sand and gravel that's on top, but again, devil's in the details, but I think that's a big concern. That this wetland cut, wetland fill could be a much bigger than. What is anticipated, uh especially with unstable soils. Uh, what really bothers me though is on page ten. And page twelve again, the answers of fill. Uh, each one of those answers is answer is offsite fill. Uh, I've been in the sand and gravel business for a long time, and I know that offsite fill. Can mean anything that somebody has available. Uh, that can be anything, could be blue clay, could be anything from any site. Uh, this is quite concerning because I think this is a very sensitive area. And I don't want to see any contaminated fill or other type of fills. I know, um. Eagle has a requirement for inert fills, but I also know that uh. Uh, crushed concrete or concrete uh can be considered inert fill. So again, that that particular comment bothers me. Um, the other part that bothers me is. Uh, the type of gravel and or sand that's going to be put in and uh support of this uh road. I also am quite concerned about uh stormwater runoff. I think Jeff knows me well that. I I do pay a particular attention at stormwater runoff. I was pleased to hear that there'll be some type of matting and erosion control there, but. Again, I think the nature of this site, uh, this is important that we. Make sure that the stormwater is maintained such that it doesn't end up in Davis Creek. And that's pretty much my comments. Uh, again, I'm quite concerned about the cut. And I also do. Uh, agree with Mr. Zen that uh there's plenty of places for wetland mitigation. Uh, most. Townships and or other individuals have been required to do mitigation. Uh, there's no reason why the mitigation is not done here. And the rest of the comments, uh, they will be coming in from Green Oak Township for woodland permits, uh, what uh. Tree permits and uh driveway permit and uh with that, I'll pass to the next person.
Alright, yeah, thank you for your comment. Alright, it looks like we have a new phone and caller that may be James Fracker. James, if that is you, can you raise your hand by selecting pound two? In Zoom or on your receiver, rather, select pound two if if it is you, James. Alright, looks like it is. So you are unmuted on on our end. Uh, you can begin when you're ready. Are you there, James?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Much better. Yeah, you can begin when you're ready.
Yeah, well, alright, thank you for helping me work that out. I don't know how to work this stuff, I suppose. Um. Again, I commented about inadequate notice. I think this has much wider uh potential impact than. Than the engineers or Eagle recognizes. Uh, the engineers reports has. Seems to think as Eagle, I'm afraid and very disappointed seem to think. And all that matters is we don't pump too much more water into the stream and there's no other impact. There are massive other impacts. And it's Eagle's responsibility to protect the wildlife, the water quality, uh, and not just the water volume. Um, the uh Davis Creek is also known as the South Branch. Uh, of the Huron River. It's part of the Natural Rivers District. The only river designated as natural rivers is country scenic. In Southeast Michigan, we value that protection very much. The Green Oak Township. Board has uh created with Eagle and D N R and supported that. Uh, designation uh in the strongest. Of terms protected and modified as necessary. The the natural rivers protection to not just protect the runoff, but to protect protect the water quality. The trees, uh, this is also a treed wetland, uh, has some incredible species. And it is um. Quite quite remarkable and quite deserving of special protection and Eagle has. And and D N R have a program to protect wooded wetlands as being especially valuable to a watershed. To to uh protect the water quality and and the natural river, which it's so designated. Green Oak Township has won lawsuits in the past uh with D N R uh to protect the natural rivers. Uh, in spite of uh so some sanctions of D N R deciding. That maybe they didn't have to, but we we uh are sure that you guys share that importance with us these days. Um. Uh, it's 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 called Sandy Creek. It's the Sandy Creek Development. It's not Sandy Creek, never was Sandy Creek. And that development was part of this, this parcel was part of that parcel. That was turned into Sandy Creek Development and the current applicant also developed that parcel and made a considerable amount of money. Uh, and part of his agreement, I do believe, was leaving this property as natural and now. For some reason, uh, we've come forward to go back on that agreement. I'm really disappointed in that and I. Would hope that that would be reconsidered. Um. Let's see.
You have, you have about a minute left.
Yeah, the. Okay, the predevelopment, uh. Woodland is important to protect. Uh, there's, there's really, there's so many. Aspects of this property that are remarkable, unusual and fading, uh, and uh. So and and I hope that Eagle will recognize its obligation. To not just go, oh, well, this just little bit more wetland loss, this little bit more invasion, these few more. Uh, trees uh can just. They really don't have any definable severe impact in anything, so let's just let it happen. It's got to be protected because it's now the point at which. We have to really honor that responsibility. Thank you very much for listening.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. Alright, next up is Lauren uh McConaty, and then after Lauren is Anne Zen. So it looks like you're unmuted on our end, Lauren. You can begin when you're ready.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep, sounds good.
Hi, my name's Lauren McConaughey. I reside at one one four four seven South Fairlane Drive on a lot that is adjacent to the upland. Of this area that's being planned to develop and um further, I am a currently a PhD student at University of Michigan where I study epidemiology. I'm greatly concerned about Tom Duncan's proposal to develop this precious land bordering the Huron River. Um, according to Eagle itself, wetlands are critical to flood control, pollutant removal, sediment retention, and groundwater recharge. This proposal asks to build a road directly through about fourteen thousand square feet of wetland in a floodplain, but doesn't. Does not currently include any wetland mitigation, as many has mentioned. Further, this pro- Further, this proposal ignores that the driveway could and will further disrupt one point two four acres of wetland area that also includes Davis Creek. It does attempt to address the flooding concerns that come with major disruptions throughout wetland areas with three eighteen-inch culverts along the two hundred and sixty-four to sixty-five-foot drive and scraping to extend the flood plain. But as someone who walks Marshall Road daily by the wetland and by the river, I struggle to believe these culverts would sufficiently allow drainage to accommodate the major rises and fluctuations in river levels. And as many have mentioned, there is no plan to mitigate the environmental impacts surrounding the scraping. Moreover, it does not even begin to address the effects that disruption of this area of the wetlands could have on pollution levels and groundwater, which is to me a particular concern because this community relies on well water. And this proposal, given that it fails to include any wetland mitigation plans, I believe that the developers who have proposed this are underestimating the many functions of wetlands. Additionally, as many have mentioned, this proposal does request to remove over fifty trees, twenty of which are at least two feet in diameter with, again, no plans for tree mitigation. This would include removing a nearly three-foot-wide swamp oak tree along with red maples, black cherry, American elm and a variety of various species of hickory trees. And you know, not only do I walk right along Marshall Road by this river on a daily basis, I also, my office window overlooks this area. And I, you know, spend a lot of time studying and I have personally witnessed that there is an immense amount of wildlife that utilizes this undeveloped strip of land bordering the Huron River as a key passage, you know, on the day-to-day and also in migration. The animals that I have witnessed include deer, turkey, moles, groundhogs, possums, a variety of frogs, including peepers and tree frogs. I've seen blue-spotted salamanders and abundance of birds, including Canadian geese, cranes, hawks, hummingbirds, cardinals, robins, blue jays, warblers, wrens and woodpeckers. This proposal plans to disrupt and not repair any of these critical animal habitats, which I know is also important. So I want to express my support that this remains undeveloped. It's functioned very effectively in its natural state at flood control, the protection in the reserve of groundwater, which is a critical
A minute left, Lauren.
I'm just wrapping up and as a home for many migratory species and local species. So I want to thank you all for your time and also Eagle, I hope that you can look into this a little further for us. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right. Next up is Ann Zen. I don't see Ann on here. Ann, if you're with another person or we were with Carl, please raise your hand in Zoom and we'll call on you if you're if you're here. All right, yep, looks like you're unmuted under Carl Zen's name. So Carl or Ann, you'll need to unmute yourself and then Ann can begin her comments. You can just hit the micro.
Here I am. All right.
Yep, we can hear you. You can begin already.
Okay, my name is Ann Zen. I've lived in Green Oak for five fifty-five years and served on the planning commission here twice for a total of sixteen years. We have five acres and we have always valued the beauty of Davis Creek, otherwise known as the Southeast Branch of the Huron River, which is the subject of our hearing tonight. We have always valued the beauty of the property. We share more than half of the forested wetland across which Mr. Duncan has planned his driveway construction. And that goes to the east and the west. We've been here through a hundred year flood flooding also, and it goes all the way to Marshall Road and all the way to our Fairlane Drive. Excuse me. First, let me confirm that this beautiful and recognized important tributary of the Huron River has received official recognition and protection from three agencies. FEMA for flooding and the Natural Resources Ordinances of the State of Michigan and Green Oak Township. Mr. Duncan would have to obtain permits from all three agencies to build his driveway, which presently planned would violate regulations from all three, which are meant to preserve the health and quality of the river and wetland. Most importantly this evening is the review of the forested wetland, which is designated by FEMA as being an important floodway for retaining high water before it goes downstream. The engineers plan to handle any flood with three culverts, ignores many other factors important to the health of the river and the wetland, including excavating damage caused by filling with inappropriate possibly material for a driveway base and providing only three culverts to handle the flood into the wetlands, the driveway blocking all other water flow into the area that is usually a wet environment that's been here for thousands of years, part of the river system. No mitigation has been arranged for the many trees to be removed. In the wetland, many of them are landmark trees. I might also interject since my minute hasn't started. There is a archaeological site on the top of our hill over the river and the wetlands, which is several thousand years old and it has a state number in case you want to look it up. Twenty LV ten. Okay, it's a for hunting maintenance site. And the river was the river was the highway to Lake Erie. It was definitely a place to save. The land actually is worth more in a conservancy than it would be as a subdivision lot. I expect
You had about a minute left.
will be made. I repeat what that was then. The land is worth more than a conservancy than it would be as a subdivision lot. I expect the right decisions will be made.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for letting me.
All right, I have one more name on my list, Scott Munzel or Munzel. So after Scott, we are going to go to anybody who has not made a comment yet and did not register can raise their hand in Zoom. So you can select the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the phone, you can select pound two and that will raise your hand in Zoom and we will call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And again, that's for for folks who haven't made a comment yet. And Scott, you are unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Scott Munzel. My address is nine Jefferson Court, Yan Arbor, Michigan. I grew up at one two oh seven five nine mile, which is in Green Oak Township, where my mother resides today. She also owns a vacant lot on the north side of Davis Creek immediately north of Mr. Duncan's Davis Sandy Creek condominium. I am speaking to oppose the application for the wetland permit. As you have heard, this is a very high-quality wetland and it should be preserved as it is. It contributes to the water quality of the Davis Creek. It protects that very valuable ecosystem right on the north side of that river. I actually have a little bit of historical knowledge for you. Mr. Duncan bought a sixty-four acre parcel in November of nineteen eighty-nine and he proceeded to develop the southern fifty-one acres into a condominium that has at least twenty-nine single-family homesites. And I believe about twenty-one boat slips on Sandy Bottom. They're all sold. And so Mr. Duncan bought a sixty-four acre parcel, which he has successfully been able to develop over the years. So he's made a reasonable return. And this is important because in Michigan, you cannot divide your land into different parcels and then seek regulatory controls over just one part of them. It's called the non-segmentation theory and the state and the courts look at a parcel as a whole in its entirety. And so and that was confirmed by a Michigan Supreme Court decision called K and K Construction versus DNR, which is founded four fifty-six Michigan five seventy. That was a nineteen ninety-eight case. And that was a case where the DNR denied a wetland permit when a developer tried to divide his land into four pieces and sought to get a permit for just one of those pieces. And the court said, no, you have to look at the parcel as a whole. And so in a way, Mr. Duncan is just postponing what he should have done back in the nineteen nineties because the DNR are really an eagle should be looking at this parcel as if it's one sixty-four acre parcel. He is seeking to divide it into a fifty-one acre parcel, which he's already developed, and a thirteen acre parcel, which he has sat and waited to develop over the years. He should, he knew or should have known back then that he could not develop this parcel. And he's basically now trying to make up for that error that he that happened so many years ago.
I'm at last, Scott.
His application does not meet the standards for approval by the wet by the eagle. It is not in the public interest at all. It's not necessary for the activity of development, which he has already essentially fully completed with his twenty-nine prior lots. There is a prudent feasible alternative. He has already exercised his rights. And so it does not meet the standards. This permit can be denied and there would not be a regulatory taking under Michigan law. So that's what I would like to say. Thank you for your time and you really do need to consider it as part of the sixty-four acre parcel that he bought in in nineteen eighty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. So now we're going to go to people who would like to who haven't commented yet can raise their hands in Zoom. It looks like we have a couple on there. So Brenda Brenda Whitman, we are unmuting you. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay?
Yep, we can hear you. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. I, my name is Brenda Wideman, of course, and my husband and I, we live in the Fairland subdivision and border the parcel proposed for development. I agree with everything that's been said so far. And along with what Jim has already kind of stated about the Davis Creek, even though it's not the actual thing being is not the purpose of the meeting, but it's directly involved. So I just want to comment and give some people some interesting facts that I found regarding the creek shed. And just to increase awareness of the rareness and the preciousness of this area. Like Jim said, that this this proportion of Davis Creek is actually a state natural river zone. And that designation aims to reduce bank erosion and retain the scenic appearance of stream banks by restricting the location of new buildings and the clearing of trees and other vegetation. The Davis Creek has twelve mussels or twelve species of river mussels, including endangered snuffbox mussel, state-listed wavy raid lamp mussel and three other species of special concern. Also, the creek sheds forests, wetlands and grasslands soak up rainwater and runoff, filter pollutants from runoff and provide wildlife habitat and beautiful places. About twenty-five percent of the creek shed remains intact natural areas. It will be important to keep these lands natural so they can continue to keep the creek healthy. And then so most of that was from the the I believe it was the website for the Huron Valley River said. This next portion actually comes from Eagle's website. In regards to page ten of fourteen, the application, it stated that the wetland type that will be affected is rare and imperiled. And from that website, from Eagle's website, it says of the thirty-three distinct wetland types known to occur in Michigan, twenty-six are considered rare because fewer than one hundred intact functioning examples are known to occur. Eight of the twenty-six rare wetland types are considered imperiled and at high risk of extinction because twenty or fewer intact and functioning examples are known. So I just want to let everybody know that this is a very precious piece of land like everyone else has stated previously, and it really is important to protect. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. All right. Next up is Blake Harity. Blake, we're going to unmute you on our end. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. It's soft, but we can hear you.
All right. Well, my name is Blake Harity and I am a concerned citizen. I am against this proposed driveway development because of the harm it can and will cause to the surrounding wetland ecosystem. As Michiganders, we have a duty to protect and conserve our natural resources for currents and future generations. By building through a protected wetland, it will have long-lasting effects on the health and aesthetic value of this ecosystem. The more we allow our wetlands to be developed, the less environmental benefits we will have. So yeah, I'm just very concerned with how we don't understand the overall effects of this project on this wetland. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Next up is Rhonda Facker. Rhonda, we are going to unmute you. And you can unmute yourself and begin.
Can you hear me?
Yep, sounds good.
Well, thank you for having this public hearing tonight. It is very much appreciated. It was, I know it was requested by many. My name is Rhonda Fackert. I reside at one oh five 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 McCabe Road in Brighton. I'm affected at both ends. My family owns a hundred and twenty feet of frontage on Sandy Bottom Lake. And my husband and I have twenty-three hundred feet of frontage on the Huron River. So there is a deep concern that you would consider all of the comments that have been made and take them very seriously and into consideration. One thing that I did put in my earlier comments before the public hearing was that hasn't been mentioned tonight, but most other things were, is that this property in the high-quality natural areas assessment for Livingston County is a priority one. So it's very important with the DNR, with the state of Michigan and the Livingston County that this property is protected. I'm asking for the permit to be denied for the numerous reasons that are cited in the public comments, including mine, today's hearing, the Green Oak Township concerns and the recognition by Green Oak Township that the property is highly sensitive. The eagle, I have an eagle statement made by an attorney in an opinion and it says that property rights in Michigan take a backseat to the mandates of part three oh three. If for any unknown reason a permit is issued, I would request that absolutely no compromise to the rules and regulations of part three oh one and Lynn Lakes and Streams and part three oh three, the Wetland Protection of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act be compromised or negotiated. That Eagle will enforce these acts to the full extent of the law for the betterment of the community, our our state and the environment. Thank you again for taking the time to hear our comments.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment who hasn't yet made a comment? Again, you can select the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the phone, you can select pound two and that will raise your hands and we can call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. All right. Looks like we have a phone-in caller, one seven two two. It looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Oh, hi there. My name is Art Shunishewski. I've been a Green Oak Township resident for over thirty years. I live on one one four six North Fairlane, which is just up the road from the bridge here on Marshall Crosses Davis Creek. We walked that area many times over the years. I stood on the bridge, fished there with my children and we go seasonally to watch when it floods, see the skunk cabbage come out, see the water go. Of all the animals that people named before, we found an injured mink earlier this year and were able to take it to the Owl Nature Center and get rehabbed. My concern Um, my concern, uh, is that this is a very unique and very beautiful piece of property. Uh, and that, uh, while I don't have the sophistication of the rest of the callers here, uh, I'm concerned, uh, uh, that three culverts over this is not gonna be able to handle a flood situation in this. And that this, uh, removal of the trees will take down the beauty and the aesthetics of what we see and which is such a rare area, something that we should treasure here at Green Oak Township. It's the reason I moved here instead of the city. Um, so I, I'm against this proposal. I think it has uh, a lack of foresight, uh, to go ahead and make this long driveway for a few uh, parcels to be built on homes that with the, I think, high potential of destroying an absolutely beautiful and rare, rare wetland that people regularly use. When I'm on there, we, we walk it, we see it, we look at the animals, we fish from the bridge. It's not just some sort of, uh, 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 vague idea out there. Something this is a, it's a, it's a reality for us who live here, uh, to enjoy it. And that's why we do. So I, I would say I'm very much against this proposal for that reason. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right. Is anybody else who would like to make a comment who hasn't yet made a comment? Um, again, uh, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two or raise your hand in zoom. Uh, we'll give it a couple of seconds here to see if anybody else, uh, has, would like to make a comment. And then if, uh, if we don't have any more raised hands, we'll move on to the next part of the evening, which is we'll, we'll show you those other ways to make a comment. Uh, in case you have anything to submit or, uh, we didn't get to your con, or we, you decided not to comment tonight and would prefer to send it in. Uh, you're welcome to do that as well. So we'll go through that. And I'm still not seeing any other raised hands. So we're going to go ahead and close out this hearing portion. Um, so Matt, would you like to read the closing statement tonight?
Sure. Um, thank you all for your comments and cooperation. Uh, we appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until November 16th, 2023. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to submit a comment, comments can be submitted via the MindViro portal, email or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you all again.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Um, yeah, I've got this slide up again. That shows you the other ways to make a comment. As Matt said, in MindViro submission H P F Q T H B J A R R R. Um, or by mail to Matthew Rogers, Matthew Rogers, Eagle Water Resources Division, Lansing District Office, 525 West Alleghan Street, and that's A L L E G A N, Lansing, Michigan, 48933. And the comment period will be open for 10 days. Uh, if you have any additional questions that come up, you can contact Matt, Matt Rogers at 517-388-6869, and that's 517-388-6869. Or by email at Rogers M, that's R O G E R S M 17 at Michigan.gov. And that's Michigan spelled out, M I C H I G A N. So that's Rogers M 17 at Michigan.gov. All right. Uh, thank you all. And that gets us close, uh, to closing out here. Jeff, did you have any final comments for us tonight?
Sure. Um, excuse me. Uh, I just want to thank everybody for coming to the hearing tonight, um, and providing comments and questions. I, I think there's been quite a few things discussed tonight that, um, we're definitely going to be thinking about and considering as we, you know, work through the, the review of this project. Um, so again, I, I really appreciate you all taking the time to come out. Um, please, if you still have comments or just want to, you know, put your comments that you gave us tonight into writing. You know, follow those links that, that Ryan talked about earlier, you know, submit that to us. We, we definitely read this stuff and we do consider it in our review. Um, so yes, please, please follow through on that. Um, and thank you all again. Have a great night.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, and thanks to all our panelists, all of you for participating tonight. Last thing I have is just a reminder that this hearing was recorded. A closed caption version of that recording will be on our website or YouTube channel in a couple of days here. So with that, I hope you all have a great rest of your evening. Good night.